I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order and welcome all of you for coming and joining us this evening. First, I'd like to invite Pastor Mason Phillips of the River of Life Church to come to our podium where he will deliver our invocation. And thank you for coming tonight.
Well, it's my honor to kick off our meeting with prayer, so I'd ask you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be in your presence right now. And Lord, I pray for the men and women of the Board of Education, Lord, that you grant them the wisdom that they need, the understanding they need, to make the decisions that impact the future of children and generations to come. Lord, I pray that you would give them the grace that they could see things with your heart and your perspective, that they would not just be challenged by the, or see the problems, but God, that they would see solutions, they would see opportunities, or that they would be able to make wise decisions that produces a good result. Lord, I thank you for their desire to represent the future of, the future generation of leaders that are being raised up in our community. They, they represent the heart and the values of this community. And Lord, we thank you for positioning them with wisdom, positioning them with authority, and positioning them with the kind of grace necessary to lead with tender-heartedness and to lead with a strong confidence in what they're doing and how they're making a difference. So Father, I ask that you bless the meeting tonight, that your presence will be felt and known, and we honor you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the next item which is proven our agenda, I would like to recognize some special guests we have this evening. We have Representative Phillip Sheppard. Thank you for joining us. And we also have our, two of our commissioners, Royce Bennett and Mark Price, and thank you for attending as well. Did I miss anyone? It's nice to have these gentlemen come out from their regular duties and to join us. So thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as is presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is approval of the consent agenda. You see several items under there that you've had additional time to peruse, so I'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is the Good News Spotlight, which we really enjoy doing because it allows us to focus on some of the achievements and major recognitions that our staff and our students have received.
Madam Chair, thank you. We enjoy bringing the Good News Spotlight to you every, every month, so, good thing there. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout, executive staff, and our audience tonight. In Onslow County schools, we're always happy to share the professional accomplishments of our teachers with you all. I would like to ask Northside High School teacher Carrie Cobb and her principal Lynn Jackson to join me at the front. And we'd also like to welcome Ms. Paula Reddick, who's the Assistant Vice President of Community and Public Relations with Jones Onslow EMC, to help with the following presentation. Northside High School CTE teacher Carrie Cobb was recently awarded a 2018-2019 fellowship from the Keenan Fellows Program. Her fellowship was made possible through a partnership between Jones Onslow Electric Membership Corporation, North Carolina's Electric Cooperatives, and the Keenan Fellows Program for Teacher Leadership at NC State University. Chosen from a competitive pool of applicants, Mrs. Cobb joins an elite group of educators statewide who are working to advance K-12 STEM education in North Carolina. The Keenan Fellows Program was established in 2000 as an initiative of the Keenan Institute for Engineering, Technology, and Science at NC State University, and addresses the need for high-quality professional development for educators, particularly in the STEM field. A summer internship of at least three weeks has been the centerpiece of the program and is supported by 80 hours of professional development. Fellows use their newfound knowledge to complete a project that will drive innovation in their school, district, and community. Mrs. Cobb will partner with Jones Onslow Electric Membership Corporation for a project called Jones Onslow EMC: Powering People and Communities. Mrs. Cobb will learn more about the electric utility industry and how power is generated and delivered, and she will then bring that knowledge and experience back to the school and share it with her students. So please join me in congratulating Mrs. Carrie Cobb on her selection as a Keenan Fellow.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Carrie, I thought your pictures looked really cute with that hard hat.
And next, we'd like to welcome to the front Louisa Davis and Susan Agrew, the Director and Assistant Director of Early Childhood Initiatives in Onslow County, to the podium. Tonight, we would like to recognize the Onslow County Early Childhood Team and OCS Headstart for recently receiving a Health and Safety Grant from the Office of Headstart. In May of 2018, the preschool team collaborated with maintenance staff to identify and prioritize the health and safety needs for our preschool program and submitted a grant application for $102,500. OCS was recently informed that we have been awarded the full amount. Now, these awarded funds will assist Onslow County schools in enhancing, expanding, and/or replacing health assessment equipment, playground equipment, equipment sheds, deck areas, and ramp systems at several of our preschool sites. The enrichment of these outdoor learning spaces will provide an expanded opportunity for children to develop social skills and fine motor skills, build friendships, and explore new things. We're very proud of the Onslow County Schools' Early Childhood Program and its commitment to early education, so please join me in congratulating this team on their recent accomplishment and success over the years. And finally, we'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Jeff Holloman, to come join me at the front. The Onslow County Schools' Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017 qualifies for a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. I'm proud to announce that this is the 15th consecutive year that the Onslow County Board of Education has earned this prestigious award. Congratulations to Mr. Holloman and his dedicated team in the Finance Department for their consistent, award-winning performance. And Madam Chair, that is your good news for this evening.
Are there members of the board who haven't any news you'd like to share? I'd like to just share one thing. Principal Tim Foster has invited the board and any of you who would like to come to the football game at Southwest High School on Friday night, they played East Duplin, but at that time, they will be recognizing their 400th win milestone, which was set back in the, end of the fall, and they will recognize that at this time. So, anybody'd like to make a comment about the opening of the school? Mr. Stout, would you like to say anything?
Yes, we had a great first week. We're excited that the children made it back and forth without any major issues. We had some traffic issues, always, as we always do the first couple days, but we're excited that we're back in, back into work and looking forward to a great year.
As I rode around the first day of school, I saw a lot of tears, and they were coming more from parents than they were from the children, so that's kind of good news. That's the end of the Good News Spotlight, unless others on the board have anything. If you're here just for the Good News Spotlight and you would like to make your lead, this would be a good time. We invite you to stay, but we also know that some of you have a busy day starting in the morning, and we appreciate you for your coming. We have not had anyone sign up for the first public comment session, so we'll move right into our general business. And at this time, we will, I don't know, is Mr. Brendan Gartner going to doctor? Let me get that right. A DR instead of a MR. We'll introduce this next section with us on the mental health supports. We have a pretty good handout for you as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stout, and executive staff. For many years, mental health issues and people diagnosed with mental health issues have been stigmatized. And because of that stigmatization, they often didn't seek treatment, or treatment was not really readily available for them. But recently, and fortunately, that mindset is changing, especially when it comes to our students. Recent studies have shown that one in five students between the ages of 12 and 18 will be diagnosed with a mental illness during their school time. And unfortunately, of those, 75% are not going to have access to the care that they need because of their illness. And it's important that they get it. Behavioral wellness and mental wellness have been shown to have a positive effect on student achievement, student attendance, reduction in substance abuse, improvement in attendance, and it's just essential that they have these services available to them. And unfortunately, sometimes, for whatever reason, they simply do not. So what we have tonight is to introduce some things that may provide us with the opportunity to provide students with those services. And the first of those, those comes through Trillium Health Resources. They are a local management entity for mental health resources, substance abuse, intellectual disabilities, and they don't provide the services, but they connect people with the services they need for mental health. And they recognize the need. This process started about two years ago. Mr. Williams and I served on a committee of community members, and we met with Trillium and a large number of people, and law enforcement, local government, and the lack of mental health resources really became a focus of that meeting and those meetings. And we had some uncomfortable conversations, but Trillium was always ready to listen. And from that, they put out what they call a gaps and needs assessment, and the spring 2018 results presented two issues for the schools that they really wanted to see, and it was school-based mental health resources and also a day treatment program for some students who needed some additional assistance away from the school. One of those, we were able to get addressed through Trillium, and that is the school-based mental health services. Trillium put out an RFP, and through that RFP, Pride in NC, which is a local, well, it's not local, not just local, it's a mental health provider. They do have offices here in Jacksonville. They've been around for about 30 years. They've been in Jacksonville for about 20, and they provide mental health resources. They provide resources for developmentally delayed adults. They also provide some behavioral supports. They put out a proposal that Trillium accepted to provide us with mental health resources in the school. And what they are going to do is they will provide mental health providers to provide therapy resources to our students during the school day who may not otherwise have access to those resources. For whatever reason, be it economic, be it parent work schedules, transportation, or whatever other reason, they will have access to those, that, those services in the school. They are one of Trillium's seven preferred providers, and so we're very confident in their ability to provide competent and qualified mental health providers for our schools. They're carefully vetted through their own program. They also will be vetted through our own background checks to make sure that the people that are interacting with our students are appropriate to do so. They will work to maintain all the necessary consent that they get from the parents to make sure that they're accessing children appropriately and complying with HIPAA and FERPA and all the other privacy rules they need to. Those students that are eligible for services will receive those during the school day, and Pride in NC will have the ability to provide additional services and referrals to outside services for more intensive services that those students need, including in-home mental health, medications, and things like that. They'll be able to refer out to those services as well. There is no expense for the district for this. This is being provided entirely through the RFP, through Trillium, and through Pride in NC. They will file for insurance for the parents. It could be Medicaid. They will accept private insurance, including TRICARE. And those students who are uninsured, there are going to be funds available for them too, so they are not left out of this. They also provide those services because we do know that issues in poverty can only compound the issues that come along with mental illness. As far as the schools are concerned, we will be the point of contact for many of the referrals, where the schools will contact the parent if they believe they have a child that's having behavioral or mental health issues, and give them the information for Pride in NC and facilitate that first meeting with the parent in Pride in NC, and Pride in NC will then take over from there, and meeting with the families prior to starting services to be provided at the school. Other than that, the schools are going to basically need to provide them with some access to our internet and a place to meet with children, and that is really our only obligation at that point. So we're very, very excited about this opportunity. What we were not able to do this time around was the day treatment program is something that we're continuing to try to seek resources for. We do know it's something that our EC department and Ms. Patty Dunlap has been dedicated, and she's worked with Pride in NC for the past year or two to try and find those resources. And it's something we're still committed to, but it's just going to take a little bit longer. We're just happy that, you know, these steps are coming and that we're, these opportunities are available to us. Outside of what's available to us through Trillium, some other initiatives are being undertaken by Onslow County Schools independently. One is hiring of a behavioral and mental health specialist. The mental health providers we talked about that are going to be offered by Trillium will be focused on student. This mental health provider will be working with our teachers, and will be working with our administrators in implementing and creating behavior intervention plans for students who may have behavioral needs or mental health needs at the school. Teachers, they face mental health issues every day in the classroom, in the hallways, and we're not mental health providers, but this person will be able to provide us with the training and the resources that we need to effectively interact with these students and keep them in the classroom and work with them so they can succeed and be successful in the classroom. And this is being paid for through a Title IV grant, which is a federal block grant available through the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that's where the funding is coming for, for that position. And lastly, we talked about how people are coming around and realizing about the importance of medical, I'm sorry, mental health in schools, and that includes our legislators at the state level. And through the re-appropriations, they made available several different grants, and one of those grants was a school mental health support personnel grant. And Onslow County was awarded about $67,000, and we will be using that money to hire a full-time social worker at the Onslow County Learning Center. It's our highest need population, and it's, you know, we have, I mentioned, one in five students will have a mental illness. Forty percent of the students that come to OCLC already have a serious mental illness diagnosed, and a serious mental illness is one that will affect someone's basic life functions and their functionality in society. So this is something we're very excited to be able to offer. And that is, we have for mental health services that we're looking forward to hopefully providing to our students. And if I have any questions, I also have Mr. Gary Bass is with me as well tonight. He's the CEO of Pride in NC, so if you have any specific questions about Pride NC, if I'm not able to answer them, I'm sure Mr. Bass can fill in the gaps pretty well.
And I noticed that this isn't considered an action item, but shouldn't the board vote to accept this grant and as we move forward?
Well, the grant was available through the state. Now, I'm not sure. It was something that we applied for. It was part of the appropriations bill, and we were awarded. I don't know if that would be an action item.
How do members of the board feel?
Actually, the amount that came from the state was included in your budget amendments for the monthly budget amendments that you do, so that, that is included in an item that y'all have approved.
Okay. I hate to say that we approved something that we didn't know anything about previously to tonight. Any questions for?
Just a quick question with regards to how soon will the services begin?
We don't have an MOU in place or anything like that, so it's something that, we do have a draft MOU, but it's something that will have to be reviewed by Mr. Irwin and executive staff before we're ready to start providing those services.
Okay.
But, you know, it could move fairly quickly if we wanted it to.
So I'm hearing it's on you.
Dr. Gardner, did I, did I hear you correctly when you said that we will not have the day treatment services?
Not at this time.
Okay. What would be the impact of the absence of that service to the overall?
The impact of the absence of it?
Yeah.
Well, since we don't really have that service available to us now, I mean, the impacts are those continuing issues with students who need more intensive services that aren't being able to take full advantage of their education because they have significant behaviors that require more intensive services, and without that, they're probably missing out on some of that.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Policy revision 2310, public participation at board meetings. Mr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, presented for consideration by the board is a change to policy 2310, public participation at board meetings. Previously, the policy required speakers to sign in with one, within one hour prior to the time of the board meeting. The proposed change to the policy would clarify that process and require speakers to sign in using the request to address the board form at least 10 minutes prior to the time of the board meeting. The staff would recommend approval of the change in order to clarify the process of public participation.
Do you have a motion? We accept the amendment to that?
I make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. As I had voiced in a pre-board meeting with superintendent and a couple of other board members earlier or late last week, I have concerns that although this has been in policy, at least it's been a policy since I've been on the board, we're putting it in the policy code. My concern is that instead of inviting people to come and speak, we are being a deterrent by setting the time limit. We've lost basically 10 minutes off of the clock. It used to be they had an hour, now they've got 15 minutes. Now, that still should be sufficient time. But the impact that I'm concerned about is that if we are inviting the people, and I think that we need the public to come and speak to us as often as possible, I think that makes for a good interaction for us. I think it makes good sense that we get public input before we make decisions, and I just think that this could be a little bit of a deterrent.
Other comments?
I'm very concerned if we don't have prior notice. We're not dealing with situations that many other committees and boards deal with. We have to protect, someone may come up. We're bound by FERPA to protect the rights and the privacy of students, and if someone were to come and voice some issues, that would really, it would be illegal. So I don't see a problem with that. We're not trying to keep people from coming. I encourage them to come, and I want to hear, but at the same time, we must protect our students through the FERPA Privacy Act.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, I've been attending board meetings for quite some time. I think I recall that there was a time where there was no opportunity for public participation. Mr. Irwin? At least maybe one time at the end of the meeting. But I see where the, the policy was first adopted in 2000, and correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, we've always had that 10-minute period, that before. And as Mr. Wiggins just shared with us, maybe, can you give some background as far as maybe in addition? I know there's some cross-references to other policies, but any input on that or while the 10-minute period was?
I can, to the extent that I can, yes, sir. I think Mr. Wiggins kind of hit it on the head there, is a chance to see what issues that somebody wants to bring before the board and make sure that it is something that is not going to violate any rights of students or something that we would not be able to share in an open session or in an open board meeting. And that, I think, is just the purpose for having that 10-minute period. That way, everybody knows what's going to be presented. We share that information, and everybody knows whether they can or can't, and that way you don't interrupt a speaker who's right in the middle of trying to present their information while they're doing it. You know ahead of time, can have that conversation to the side before they get up here and are making their public statements.
So we're here to protect children. We're here to protect confidentiality, and their policy's already in place. The only thing we're doing really with the policy is just stating it twice, the 10-minute, moving it up.
Yes, sir.
And I also think from last month, Mr. Ramsey added, instead of someone trying to search through the policy manual, run on, within the Board of Education, there's a, what do you call it? Bullet? Where you can sign, you know, to clarify things so people really don't have to search. I agree with Mr. Wiggins. That was in there for a purpose, and I think it's very important. I am all about people coming to speak to the board. Gives us an opportunity to hear and listen. However, we don't deal with water and sewer and zoning. We deal with children, and we deal with our employees, and if that's, the policy has worked very well in the past couple decades, I'm all for it.
Just please note that this also pertains to protection of our individual employees and their performance and records as well. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And let's move to competitive food services. And Mr. Myers?
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, staff. Policy 6230 is competitive food sales, is a competitive food sales, and what we'd like to do is update the policy. Just a background, each year, staff updates and renews the agreement with the North Carolina Board of Education and Department of Public Instruction to administer the federally-funded school nutrition program. As part of the agreement, the types of smart snacks that can be sold on campus during specific times of the day are identified. And just for the public's knowledge, smart snacks are basically snacks that are limited and are restricted in caloric intake, sugar, salt, and things like this, so they're very healthy snacks that have to be served during the school day. By restricting the sale of snacks to non-school hours, we have been able to increase the range of food and drink that can be made available for sale to the students, staff, and community at sports and extracurricular events. An example of that would be the vending machines for a basketball game. We can, they can actually buy soda pops and other candies and stuff at the, at the sporting event itself. So by amending the policy 6230, it allows us to provide a greater variety of foods and drinks to the staff, students, and community after school hours. So at this time, staff requests that the board consider a motion to approve the changes proposed to policy 6230, competitive food sales.
I make the motion.
Second.
Question and second, any comments? I know that people don't understand why we can't do that, but I, and I know there are a lot of principals in the high school level particularly who enjoyed the income from being able to do that in the past. Mr. Wiggins? I know, I know you do, and Mr. Ridge?
Madam Chair, I guess the only-
Madam Chair, I guess the only question that I would have with regards to this, we're setting thirty minutes past the last dismissal bell as the time. So basically, the majority of the students will have left. But we still have the ability, I think you said, to sell at ballgames. Are the calories we consume at the ballgames different than those we consume on campus if we're eating unhealthy snacks?
No, sir. But at the same time, the calories that are at the ballgames are also consumed by the public community as well. It's not just the students that we're focused on. It allows the schools themselves to provide snacks that the community and the parents and the community as a whole would like to use as well. Gives them more of a variety. We can still have smart snacks in the vending machines for choice, but also we can also provide additional snacks as well.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
And next is a new policy, two new policies, really. Dr. Boris?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Stow, the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary School Act as the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, in 2015, requires LEAs to have a written Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy. Currently, Onzeal County Schools Board Policy contains policy 1310-4002 Title I Parental Involvement. This policy no longer meets the legal requirements under ESSA. In addition, various state and federal laws, along with North Carolina State Board of Education policies, require parental notification, communication, and involvement in all schools, not just Title I schools. Therefore, staff recommends that new policy 1320-3560 Title I Parent and Family Engagement be considered for adoption at a subsequent meeting, and also that the current policy 1310-4002 Title I Parental Involvement be replaced with the new policy 1310-4002 Parental Involvement. And again, that second policy would be for all schools, not just Title I schools. And that would ensure that we are in compliance with both ESSA and other state and federal requirements pertaining to parental communication and notification. So again, these policies are being presented for review in accordance to Board of Education Policy 2420, and we would request that these policies be considered for adoption at a subsequent meeting. And I believe you have copies of both of these policies in your board.
Yes, we do. Since this isn't an action item, does anyone have any questions for clarification they would like to ask Dr. Boris?
I would, Madam Chair. Dr. Boris, on the policy 1310, one of the things that I found during the review of this is that it referenced a policy that was a recommended policy, one that we hadn't implemented yet. It was a recommended policy from School Boards Association, and it's an optional policy, as I understand it. But the language was changed from policy 4720, surveys of students, to the PPRA. And I had a question with regards to, first of all, where would we find the PPRA? I was told it was in the Student Conduct Handbook, and we've been provided a copy of that, and I was able to find it there. But in addition to that, I had a question with regards to page five of 1310-4002, the proposed new policy. If you go down to C6 on there, it talks about their child's participation in any non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening that is required as a condition of attendance administered and scheduled in advance by the school administration, and not necessarily to protect the immediate health and safety of students. I guess my first question was, is what does that mean? What is an invasive there? I had asked that question during pre-board. I got an answer back, but I wasn't quite sure that it answered the question I had. So I pulled the policy. I actually pulled a copy off of the Cornell Law School, the code that we cite at the end of the policy with regards to that. And with regards to that, it has, it outlines it basically as we're outlining it in paragraph six in the law. But it also has definitions of what those are. And the definition under the law says that invasive physical examination, it says the term invasive physical examinations means any medical examination that involves a private body parts or any act during such examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, but does not include a hearing, vision, or scoliosis screening. My question is that if we're going to be notifying parents that they have to opt out of this policy, and we have to, by policy, provide them with a schedule, what is it that we're scheduling that would fit into those categories?
I'm currently not aware of any invasive physical exams or screenings that would meet that legal definition. The language in the board policy is actually coming straight from the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment that is contained within the handbook, number, in that middle section, number two. But it does also add one clarifying statement here that says with the option to opt out, it does say except for hearing, vision, or scoliosis screenings, or any physical exam or screen permitted or required under state law. So that, and if the, you know, board wishes, that can certainly be a statement that's added to the policy. But the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment does contain that, and that's the legal requirement that's in there. So it's just repeating the language of that act.
In my opinion, I think that would be helpful to make that paragraph six more clarifying. But in addition to that, I think that we also probably ought to have something out there to tell the parents and the public exactly what an invasive physical examination does include.
Mark, would that include early childhood dental exams? That's invasive?
Well, certainly, yeah.
And the parents are, you know, have to opt in or out of doing that?
I think you're, I think you are correct on that. And they certainly have to opt out through Head Start and Early Childhood Program, because that is a service we do offer in early childhood.
Would it also refer to physicals that are provided for athletes on campus by a licensed physician?
Well, I think that's more of an opt-in, because parents are choosing themselves to bring their children to those exams. That's not anything that we're requiring.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the second public comment session that we have, and would just like to remind the two people who've signed up to speak tonight, is that you are aware, because you filled us out, of what topics you can and can't speak to. And we have five minutes, and I'll call the first one up, and it's Mr. Dennis Bregard.
Good evening. Want to start by thanking everyone in the room for the job you do. Each one of you chose to be in the position you're in, and I know it's a great responsibility. You're hired or elected to manage, oversee, and steward the public school system in Onzeal County with over 26,000 students and over 1,500 teachers. As administrators and elected representatives, a great deal of trust has been given to you by the citizens and taxpayers of Onzeal County. That trust has been broken. On May 11th, 2018, a public announcement was made that the Onzeal County Board of Education voted five to two to shut down our schools on May 16th, 2018. The reason stated was as follows. We value instructional time and no disclosure will put a hardship on families, but it's just not possible to cover classrooms with qualified substitutes or other OCS employees and still maintain the safety of our students for continual high-quality instruction. This was a first in the history of the state of North Carolina. Forty school districts in the state closed. Over 1 million students were shut out of school that day and told to stay home. In effect, our government schools went on strike. And yet, nobody's talking about what happened. It's being treated as a non-event. No big deal, but it was a big deal. And it should be discussed by this board. The citizens of Onzeal County deserve transparency and an explanation for how this happened, and assurance from this board it will never happen again. I was prepared to demand a change in policy to prevent this from happening again, but much to my surprise, policies are already in place to prevent this from happening. The policy states, if a teacher requests personal leave at least five days in advance, the leave shall be granted if a substitute is available. Let me repeat that. The personal leave day will be granted if a substitute is available, which means if a substitute isn't available, the answer is no. You cannot take a personal leave day. Problem solved, no school shutdown. Teachers have every right to request a personal leave day. They have a policy that must follow. But school administrators in this board have a policy they must follow as well. They must deny personal leave requests if there aren't enough substitutes available. That's your obligation. That is your responsibility, and that is your job. It was noted that almost 260 teachers requested a personal leave day, which means that more than 1,300 teachers did not. But the numbers don't matter. Even if all 1,500-plus teachers requested a day off, it is the responsibility of those in charge to enforce policy and deny all requests exceeding availability of substitutes. If the teachers take a day off anyhow, then they're violating policy and should be dealt with accordingly. At some point, they'd be breaking the law by participating in a strike. It is your responsibility to enforce your policy regardless of whether teachers follow theirs. Thanks to a public records request, it is clear to me who asked principals and vice principals to approve all requests for personal leave regardless of the availability of substitute teachers. This decision created a situation which was then used as an excuse to shut down our schools. It was stated the school system simply had no choice, but that wasn't true. Decisions were made which prevented the schools from opening. What is not clear is who else was involved in making and supporting that decision. Ultimately, the Onzeal County Board of Education members voted five to two to shut down our schools. Board member Bob Williams was the only person in a position of authority to address the policy, which stated leave would be granted only if there were enough substitutes available. And I want to applaud him for doing what he was elected to do. Unfortunately, his questions and concerns were ignored in the communication I have in my possession. Since we know the policies were ignored and the schools were shut down, we have to ask why. Was the disruptions of families, jobs, childrens a goal to make a point? Were schools shut down so nobody would know the difference between the 250 teachers who requested a day off and the 1,300 who didn't? Did our administrators simply lack the fortitude and character to tell the teachers, no, you can't take that day off? A lot of questions need to be answered, and it is duty and responsibility of the elected board members to ask the questions and provide answers to the citizens of this county in a public manner. Yet, this shutdown hasn't been on your agenda, and it hasn't been discussed publicly at all since it happened. Remember, each one of you chose to be in the position you're in. We trusted you, and we elected you to enforce policy and oversee our schools. This isn't about you. It's about our schools, our children, the taxpayers, and the citizens of Onzeal County. Last month, Chair Tom has prevented me from speaking during the public comment period due to strict adherence to meeting policy. She also prevented the student body president of Jacksonville High School from speaking based on the same strict adherence to policy. Yet, this board or superintendent ignored and violated policy that would have prevented our schools from shutting down. I have to ask, what are your priorities? This school shutdown wasn't a policy problem. It was a people problem. So no policies need to be changed to assure our schools aren't shut down again for the same reason. What does need to change are the people in charge, and whoever made decisions to ignore policy, admit their error, apologize, and assure it will never happen again. This shutdown should have never happened in this board owes the citizens of Onzeal County transparency and accountability for this shutdown. My expectation is that the next agenda will address this shutdown in a straightforward manner and rebuild the trust that was lost by detailing how this will be prevented from ever happening again and how it happened in the first place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Anne Hardinger.
Madam Chairwoman, I withdraw my request.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate people coming and speaking. It gives us a different perspective and lets us hear from the community that's represented by most of the speakers that come. At this time, there's no other agenda items, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. This meeting is adjourned. Have a safe trip home.